Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Stewart's Regular Commission Meeting. Mayor Matheson asked me to give his apologies for not being here today. He's, I guess he's on vacation with his kids in the Keys. So, Mary, could you call the role, please?
Vice Mayor Troy McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Becky Bruner.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
And Mayor Matheson.
Okay, thank you. If you'd please join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, being that this is our first meeting of the month, the first item of business is the Arts Moment. Leila Fores is going to do a song performance for us. Is it Leila or Kayla?
It's Leila.
Leila, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. A cold sweat, hot-headed believer. I threw my hands in the air and said, "Show me something." He said, "If you dare come a little closer." Round and around and around and around we go. Oh, now tell me now, tell me now, tell me now, you know. Not really sure how to feel about it. Something in the way you move makes me feel like I can't live without you. Yeah, it takes me all the way. I want you to stay. It's not much of a life you're living. It's not just something you take, it's given. Round and around and around and around we go. Oh, now tell me now, tell me now, tell me now, you know. Not really sure how to feel about it. Something in the way you move makes me feel like I can't live without you. Yeah, it takes me all the way. I want you to stay. Ooh, the reason I hold on. Ooh, 'cause I need this whole gun. Funny, you're the broken one, but I'm the only one who needed saving. 'Cause when you never see the light, it's hard to know which one of us is caving. Not really sure how to feel about it. Something in the way you move makes me feel like I can't live without you. Yeah, it takes me all the way. I want you to stay. I want you to stay. Ooh.
Great job. Mike, you're telling it to him.
Yes, please do. I don't really know what to say. I guess it's just, it's really nice doing this. Thank you so much for having me. And, yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Leila. Moving on to our next item, Irish American Heritage Month. Mike, would you please read the proclamation?
I can. Irish American Heritage Month, March 2022. Whereas, by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had immigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in America's war for independence. And whereas, Irish-born Commodore John Barry was recognized by the United States Congress in September of 2002 as the first Flag Officer of the United States Navy and fought the last sea battle of the American Revolution off the coast of Florida. And whereas, the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators, with three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were actually Irish military officers. And whereas, Father Richard Arthur, an Irish-born priest from Limerick, who was appointed parish priest for St. Augustine in 1597 and ecclesiastical judge of La Florida, established the first public school in America and opened it to both boys and girls of all races. And whereas, Andrew Jackson, whose family came from County Antrim, served as Florida's military governor following its acquisition by the United States. And whereas, Irish Americans, since America's inception, have provided and continue to provide leadership and service to Florida and our nation, it is fitting and proper to celebrate their cultural heritage and many valuable contributions. Now therefore, I, Troy McDonald, as Vice Mayor of the City of Stewart, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 in the City of Stewart, Florida, as Irish American Heritage Month.
And accepting the proclamation, we have Raymond Lynch?
Yes, yes. My name is Ray Lynch, and I'm the Florida State President for the AOH. And whatever I say will pale in comparison to what we just heard, so I'll just humbly accept this and thank you. One thing I do want to say, though, the Florida State flag, you heard a lot of Irish history in what was written. If you take the seal off the flag, that's the flag of St. Patrick.
It's almost St. Patrick's Day. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Our next proclamation is, one actually is very important to me. My father was a Vietnam-era vet, fought in Vietnam. So it's a commemoration of the 50th anniversary of Vietnam War and Vietnam War Veterans Day on March 29, 2022. Mike, would you read the proclamation?
Proclamation recognizing the nation's 13-year commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War and honoring our Vietnam War veterans. Whereas, President Donald J. Trump in 2017 and President Barack Obama in 2012 signed official proclamations to honor Vietnam veterans with a commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, a 13-year commemoration beginning May 28, 2012, and ending November 11, 2025. We pay tribute to servicemen and women who left their families to serve bravely. And whereas, as a grateful nation, we honor more than 58,000 patriots and their sacrifices, their names etched in black granite. We draw inspiration from those who were prisoners of war. As a nation, we pledge to keep faith with those who still carry the scars of war, and we pledge to bring the 1,600 missing service members back home. And whereas, in recognition of a chapter in our nation's history that must never be forgotten, let us renew our sacred commitment to those who answered our country's call in Vietnam. And whereas, throughout this commemoration, let us remember that it is never too late to pay tribute to the men and women who answered the call of duty with courage and valor, who have served a grateful nation. And whereas, we will continue what began Memorial Day 2012 until Veterans Day 2025 to honor our Vietnam veterans. Now therefore, I, Troy McDonald, as Vice Mayor of the City of Stewart, Florida, do hereby recognize the nation's continued commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, as well as Vietnam War Veterans Day on March 29, 2022, to honor the heroism of those who sacrificed their lives to procure the blessings of liberty and freedom.
And do we have Donna Dubois here to accept? I don't see her. Okay, we don't have anybody from the Hoppatahokee Chaplainor of the National Society of the Daughters of America Revolution, so, Mike, if we can see that we get this mailed to them?
Yeah.
How about Mary?
I will take care of it.
You'll take care of it? Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next one, the 50th anniversary of the Florida Association of City Clerks, another proclamation. Mike, could you please read this one?
I, I can. I wasn't sure. Mary, did you want to read it?
No, you go ahead, Mike, please.
I'm loading it. It's not, look at it.
It's not there. I don't have it in front of me.
It's coming up. You guys have to bear with me. See IT Department present? Oh, there it goes. Proclamation, 50th anniversary of the Florida Association of City Clerks. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government and is one of the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional and essential link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and intergovernmental agencies at the local, state, and federal levels, along with other essential services. And whereas, the Florida Association of Clerks, or FACC, is the professional membership organization for Florida's municipal clerks and others who work within the clerk's office. And whereas, FACC began in 1972, when its founder, the late Robert N. Clark, CMC, City Clerk of Sunrise, saw the need for an organization to bring together like-minded people to unite the voice of all municipal clerks, to share ideas and to assist one another in the work of municipal government. And whereas, FACC celebrates its 50th anniversary in 2022 and a golden anniversary is a momentous occasion worthy of commendation, and Florida's cities, towns, and villages will all join in observation of this celebratory event. And whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, FACC is a primary source for the educational programs, seminars, workshops, and webinars for educating Florida's municipal clerks and those who serve in the clerk's office. And municipal clerks look to FACC to provide the training needed to obtain their Certified Municipal Clerk, or CMC, and Master Municipal Clerk, MMC, certifications. Now therefore, I, Troy McDonald, as Vice Mayor of the City of Stewart, Florida, do hereby proclaim 2022 as the 50th anniversary of the Florida Association of City Clerks in Stewart, Florida. And FACC again is the Florida Association of City Clerks.
And accepting this proclamation is our very own Mary Kendall.
to the success of the City Clerk's Department.
Susei, too.
And Susei, she already did.
The relationships developed in the communication, and the communication among the city clerks
She's part of the clerks, too.
in Florida is priceless.
Let's have her give the, why don't Susei give a few words?
It's been very helpful. I am proud to be an active member of the Florida Association of City Clerks and to
Susei will give the speech.
serve on their Bylaws Review Committee, and even more proud to be the City of Stewart City Clerk. So, thank you so much. And Susei is working on her CMC. She just started.
Great.
And I'm almost to my MMC, so, we're getting there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And you guys do both, both of you guys do great work, and we really appreciate you and Susei and everything that you both do for the city and the residents.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. The Service Awards for March of 2022. Our first one, for five years' service, is Jessica Tharp.
Oh, gorgeous.
Has it been five years?
Jessica.
Does it feel like five years?
It seems like longer than five years.
It doesn't seem to me. It seems like yesterday to me.
Really?
I guess COVID is the gap.
I'll use Mike's microphone. The next service award is James Minor, 15 years, with the Fire Department. Okay, fire medic Derek Wallace, 15 years.
Wow.
Would you like to say a few words?
Good.
Congratulations.
Okay. Fire medic Derek Wallace, 15 years.
Wow.
You'd like to say a few words?
A couple. It's been a pleasure serving the community for 15 years, looking forward to the next stint. Very excited about the direction our department's going with the expansion and the support we get from everybody, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, our next service award of one of our police sergeants, he's not here tonight, but let's give him a big round of applause anyways, because it's 25 years. John Reddick. Now, our final one is another 25-year veteran of the City of Stewart. And I understand that we actually may have a presentation?
Well, not quite a presentation, Vice Mayor, but normally, the police chief gives out service pins to the different officers as they reach milestones in their career. And seeing how there's no police chief above the police chief to give him one, I thought maybe you would like to give him his service pin to wear on his uniform.
That'd be great. So, let's give a big round of applause to Joseph Dumelley, City Police.
He's not here. He's not here tonight.
Does it feel like 30?
He doesn't have his uniform on. You can't pin that shirt.
By the way, Troy, like, normally, it's like his mother or his wife that would do this. You guys are going to be forever bonded by this. Jam it in. Give it like a cork.
Put it on his collar?
I'll put it in, and then you can, you can.
Putting holes in that shirt. That shirt costs more than a uniform shirt.
Just tear the shirt.
Put it on the collar. You got it?
Chief, thank you for your service, and we miss you at the Bike to Horizon Work Week. That wasn't happening.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
25 years worth. 25 years, it's a lot.
Well, this is, I really do appreciate everyone that works for the city. Everybody has been supportive. You know, the first day I walk into this job, 25 years later, here I am. You know, time flies. Working my way through the ranks, it has been a, an experience that not a lot of people can say that they have. I am very honored to have this experience with the Stewart Police Department, the City of Stewart, everyone up there, all of the citizens as well. I do want to recognize Milton.
Congratulations, Milton.
Makes me so happy to like working here.
Okay, so, it's, I've been informed by the clerk that we're going to move Item 6, the Employee Spotlight, to next month, because the employee that's of the Spotlight is not, Deborah Carrasico, is not here today. So, we'll move that to next, next month, and then move on to our first presentation, which is Off-Site Improvements and Infrastructure Connected to the Avalia Master PUD. And Kev, are you taking that item?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
That's how you clear a room.
There you go, Kev.
We should do this more often. So, I was asked by the City Commission, the City Manager, to put together a presentation relating to the Avonlea Project that's taking shape now north of the bridge. We do get a lot of inquiries from citizens about what's happening over there, and I think the Commission were looking to update the community on where we are and also some of the requirements that were established some time ago. Now, this application, well, this site in general, first came into life in 1997, when it was first annexed into the city. It's gone through a number of transformations since then. The, the market had a big role in the way this development as a whole came together. Up until 2015, there was really no activity apart from some commercial and industrial work out in Avonlea, and which brought together in 2015 a proposed new Avonlea Planned Unit Development. And at that time, the Commission removed the designation from the urban district and the urban code and placed on it a planned unit development, both commercial and residential. And I'll go into that a bit more in a couple of slides. And then since then, we, primarily, again, because of the market, have swung around in a different direction. We've had a number of applications come through, starting with Parcel 1, a commercial development proposal there, and moving now to more residential units coming online in Avonlea. And if you drive around there at the moment, you'll see a lot of building and development activities, which, as it's sat there for more than 23 years, 25 years almost, I would think, that people are now seeing some activities there that were always planned to happen, but now are happening all at the same time. So, in 2015, a proposal came in to redesignate this PUD into a PUD. And part of that was the amendments to the transportation system around there, with Green River Parkway coming online, Baker Road extension, and the form of the development changed accordingly. It reduced in size to 49.04 acres. And part of that was a breaking up of various parcels and designating certain densities and intensities to those parcels. But more importantly, was a allocation and designation of wetland and preserve areas that would be maintained in perpetuity, providing for this to be a master-planned overall development. So there's four large areas of wetlands that were preserved, complete with buffer areas, and they totaled over 12 acres. And they, they are there, they've been maintained, and they will be maintained as far as this PUD is in place. In association with that, some preserve areas, where upland preserve areas, were also designated and set aside. Overall, there are 20, over 20 acres of wetland and upland preservation within the PUD. Not only that, each parcel is subject to its own requirement to provide open space and comply with tree preservation and replacement as we have in the city for any PUD. So not only, those sites on, that you see in remaining in white, are not designated to be completely cleared, they're not designated to be completely built upon, they have to have their own open space, they have to deal with their own stormwater, and they have to be designed in accordance to City Commission's and direction, and also the Land Development Code. So it's, this is not out of control. It is well-planned, and each one of these parcels have to come to the City Commission to obtain a major PUD amendment to even move forward. The original 2015 table still stands, total preserve area of over 20 acres. Development area is 28, over 28 acres, giving a total site area of 49 acres. The open space calculations are set at 30%, and also, as you can see in the table, open space to be provided with the RPUDs and CPUDs are also notated. So the Improvement Plan came into focus as these parcels were put together, and the Off-Site Improvement Plan was developed around the implementation of each of these parcels, and each of these parcels having their own responsibility to the infrastructure that was designated to them. In this graphic, you'll see the color coding relating to each parcel and each parcel's responsibility in terms of the frontage within the rideaway that they are responsible for. And that improvement is further detailed in an Improvement Plan, Off-Site Improvement Plan. Some people refer to it as an Off-Site Infrastructure Plan, and it changes name depending on who you speak to. But essentially, the latest one shows the parameters of off-site improvements, who's responsible for those. It's primarily aimed at sidewalk, multimodal implementation, on-street parking, street furniture that would be in coordination with each phase, and also allocates the dividing line, which you can see, the sort of dark blue line which runs through the property in City of Stewart Utility Provision and Martin County Utility Provision. The Improvement Plan includes four sheets, some indication of how roadway sections are to be constructed. to obtain a major PUD amendment to even move forward. The original 2015 table still stands, total preserve area of over twenty acres. Development area is twenty-eight, over twenty-eight acres, giving a total site area of forty-nine acres. The open space calculations are set at thirty percent. And also, as you can see in the table, open space to be provided with the RPUDs and CPUDs are also notated. So the improvement plan came into focus as these parcels were put together. And the off-site improvement plan was developed around the implementation of each of these parcels and each of these parcels having their own responsibility to the infrastructure that was designated to them. In this graphic, you'll see the color coding relating to each parcel and each parcel's responsibility in terms of the frontage within the ride-of-way that they are responsible for. And that improvement is further detailed in an improvement plan, off-site improvement plan. Some people refer to it as an off-site infrastructure plan. And it changes name depending on who you speak to. But essentially, the latest one shows the parameters of off-site improvements, who's responsible for those. It's primarily aimed at sidewalk, multimodal implementation, on-street parking, street furniture that would be in coordination with each phase. And also allocates the dividing line, which you can see, the sort of dark blue line which runs through the property in City of Stewart Utility Provision and Martin County Utility Provision. The improvement plan includes four sheets, some indication of how roadway sections are to be constructed, indications of how crosswalks are to be constructed and in ride-of-way planting. Certain styles of equipment, lighting and so forth are specified. And certain entryway features. And if we go back to the improvement plan, you'll see on that at certain locations, these yellow star-like icons which show where the signage will be located. And they, we have one already approved, which is to be, well, there's two or three that will be going into Phase One, Parcel Two and Parcel Twelve prior to certificate of, final certificate of occupation of those properties. Another coincidental improvement is an application that was made by the city's Public Works Engineering Department for a FDOT Transportation Alternative Program, I think, grant, which links south of Northeast Dixie Highway to Northwest Dixie Highway up to Baker, almost Baker Road, and linking into an existing sidewalk that's already built there. The grant came in at four-hundred-and-thirty thousand or just above. It's important to note that both Parcel, I think it's Fourteen and Fifteen, which front Northwest Dixie Highway, will be obliged to contribute some of the cost of that sidewalk as they were already allocated to provide a sidewalk along this stretch. So we're working with them and the Public Works team to allocate a cost share to those properties. And I think that's what I have for you today.
Any questions or comments from the Commissioners? Mike?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Freeman, for the update. Just going back to the history of the project, I know that myself and the mayor came on, you know, long after this had originally been conceived. And we were, we were here just as it was starting to roll in with each of these individual parcel phases. So one thing that I've heard about before, but we haven't really gone into detail on in my experience up here, is the preserve areas, the wetlands and the upland preserve areas. I was just looking on GIS to see if I could get some clarity on this. But right now, as far as I can see in GIS, these are still, these are all still part of the larger kind of RPUD, right? They haven't been rezoned or applied to conservation land use.
Not at the moment. However, the PUD does allow that facility to be taken by the City Commission if they wanted to move in that direction.
So I would say now that we're seeing a lot of clearing and building, which was the plan all along, it's good to see. I think now, now we should begin moving forward. I think, I mean, you know, unfortunately, the mayor isn't here for us to begin a discussion on it, but maybe we can have staff bring back exercising that aspect of the plan originally, where we can put the preserve areas into conservation.
Yeah, we'll look into it and bring something back to you.
Okay. And then the other situation, I have heard from a few folks about sidewalks and bike lanes. And we saw the sidewalk facilities throughout the crosswalks. There was one section in the Cardinal Avenue detail, looking north. And then there was like a typical, here we go, yes, the improvement plan. So there was, there's that, in the lower left, there's the blue bike lane. But we don't have, we currently don't have plans for bike lanes that the developers are going to be installing along Cardinal or any other.
When those parcels come in, those responsible parcels will be subject to describing how they're going to adhere to the off-site improvement plan.
Okay.
And that could obviously be one of the public benefits that the Commission will be looking for.
Sure, okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
I just wanted to ask, did Mr. Walker clean a lot of that up? Because there's otters and so many plants. And I was just wondering how much he did do to take all the native, have all the native, but take out of the.
He obtained DEP permits and also SARS water management permits. He also, for, and again, consistent with the PUD, had a PAMP running along on this. And each parcel, I think, has to comply with those permits and that PAMP.
It's a beautiful piece of property.
Well, and if I can just piggyback on that again, it's to see it from this perspective because, you know, when you're riding your bike or driving down that way or going to church across the street, you see a lot of clearing. And it can be, you know, it's hard to see. But when we see here that over twenty acres is preserved wetland and preserved upland surrounding it with adequate buffers per our code, that's a good reminder that, you know, the whole thing isn't going to be completely cleared. But again, important for us to, while we're freshly thinking about it, to see what we can do about getting those put into conservation in perpetuity, through zoning and land use.
And what about lighting? Is there, I think we need more lighting, but we'll get to that at another time.
He's got it in there.
Yeah, there are some details for lighting. And that, each section will be subject to that sort of investigation as it comes through.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Unless there's any other comments, I'm going to go ahead and move on. But I would just say that the wetlands are, have been beautifully maintained up there. So, okay, moving on to, we're going to go back. I understand that Donna Dupree from the Daughters of the American Revolution is here? Or DuBois, I'm sorry. And she's going to accept the proclamation for the, what is this proclamation? Recognizing the nation's thirteen-year commemoration, thirteen-year commemoration of the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam War and honoring Vietnam War veterans.
And we've already read the proclamation. Already getting here.
Thank you, on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution. This past Friday, we had our monthly luncheon and we honored three Vietnam veterans who had served, two in the Navy and one in the Army. And it's really something because last year, one of the veterans that we honored, he spoke and said, you know, when I came back from Vietnam, people spit on me and all. And it's so good to carry this forward and all, and I thank you. I would also like to ask you, this is in the future, but our organization nationally is preparing for 2026, which is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our nation. And I know that we don't usually have a July Fourth Parade, but I was wondering if that's something that would be in the works for that time.
We'll give it some thought.
And also, next year, we plan to start doing banners with veterans' pictures on them that will be put up citywide and all. So I'm sure that will fit into going forward with Veterans Park and all.
I've been to a few communities up north that do the honor of the veterans with, on the light post. And I went to Pennsylvania three years ago when my father's picture was putting up in his hometown in Pennsylvania, so.
Well, we plan to start doing that next year here in the county and in the city. So thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, comments by City Commissioners? Mike?
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. So earlier today, Legislative Session adjourned signee die. And boy, last week was something to behold. Some pretty incredibly disappointing political bills. But apparently, there's some good, there are some good things that happened as well. And so, you know, hopefully with redistricting taking place and our new legislators that will be taking over later this year, we, you know, we should all do what we can to try to develop relationships with them so that we can have a better leg up next session, fighting for home rule and against the state taking our powers away. But, yep, overall, an interesting session. And that's all I have to say, thanks.
Okay, Becky?
I don't know if we mentioned it before, but Ms. Helen, Helen McBride, she's getting the Community Service Award, the 2022 Sage Award, and all you've done in our county for forty-plus years. So, thank you, Helen.
Yula?
Thank you, Helen. I will not be in town, I think, on that night, on the 31st. But I wish you all the best and we thank you for everything that you do for our city. I want, the Arts Moment, young lady left, but I just wanted to thank her and again, to thank the Commission for continuing to keep the Arts Moment on the agenda. I just wanted to talk about parking downtown, but we're going to talk about it on the agenda. But we just need to keep that in mind, how we can let the public know that there are places downtown where they can, where they can park and use our trolley system and other systems to get around and how we can try to work to publicize that and come up with a system so that when people are approaching downtown Stewart, they know that, you know, there's a place to go. And it's just more visual to let people know where to go, like to the Wells Park or on other places. And of course, we're going to be talking a little bit about, at the end of Flagler there, as development occurs, as more people come to use the park, as more people rent the park, and also the restaurant at the end of the line, as well as other things in our downtown area where everybody doesn't get out there and provide forty, fifty, sixty or hundred parking spaces for their development. It's all shared in the off-street parking that we have and the parking lots that we have down here. So I just wanted to, do anything when we invite people downtown to remind them to use the parking lots and to use the trolley system and to get everybody involved in doing that so they don't feel like they've come to a location and it's like, oh, there's no parking there. Especially people who are from out of town who don't understand the system. There's always parking on the weekends behind the courthouse and other places. And it just takes a minute to walk or to take the trolley. And I just wanted to just bring that awareness. I just want to thank all of our City Commissioners, actually, for all the things. We've had a very busy month, January, February, and now also into March, all the activities. And it's just commendable, the involvement and the spirit among our City Commissioners in community activities. Every time I go somewhere, there's one or two or three or four, all of us are there at these activities. So it just shows something to have the presence in the community, and I really appreciate that. And I also want to thank Milton. I'm just kidding, Milton. Seriously, though, I had a problem because we have this issue with garbage mixing, vegetation, as well as other garbage, white goods and other things. And it is a tough decision in their department how to deal with these things. And I truly want to thank Milton for the things that he does on a day-to-day basis, which may seem like a small thing to most people, but those are the things that keep our city going, keep our city looking good, and making people really feel the assurance that our city is working hard to make this place truly a hometown. And I appreciate that, not just him, but other people. Jessica Tharp was here earlier, she got her five-year award. So, so very good what they're doing there at the 10th Street Red Center and how they're interfacing with the community at large. And it is a big impact on our city. And I want to thank Mr. Redstone, Ms. Tharp, and all the staff over there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Yula. Only thing I was going to bring up on my comments tonight was Monday, myself and Mayor Matheson participated with the MPO's Bike to Work Day. Had a nice, nice little bike ride around. Several members of the city participated, Jan in HR, Chief Feliciano and Troy Bowser from the Fire Department. And we had a police escort to keep us safe on the road. So that was a lot of fun. So, and I got to see the fancy new fire bikes, I guess you'll call them. They're like fire trucks, but bicycles that the Fire Department has. And, you know, there's always one person's name that gets mentioned. So I'm not going to mention it, but I'm just going to throw out another name and say, Tim Volker. Nobody ever talks about Tim, so, Tim, good job. You deserve it. You know, I know how hard it is to work in the shadow of the guy behind you.
And Tim is grateful for Milton.
Right, to hurt a Milton.
So on that note, I'll pass it on to the manager, Dias.
Thank you. The only thing I have is just a little sneak peek preview. You should be seeing an announcement coming soon about the City of Stewart winning another award from Southern Living in the South Best Small Town. So that should be coming out soon.
Fabulous, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item. It's, let's see, what do we got here? Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll move approval, but I just wanted to remind, historically, we started our business meeting around 5:30, just to give benefit for those who work traditional office hours to be able to see what's going on. So we're way ahead of schedule, but I don't, I know we don't have a ton of, you know, huge controversial items on the agenda for this evening, but I want to be sensitive to folks who are used to coming here at 5:30. If we steam ahead, I don't want to.
Well, normally, we've been starting at four. And then if there's no items on the agenda that requires outside folks, like consultants or developers or anything like that, we continue through it. If there is an item that has one of them in there and there's a time certain, I'll actually put the time certain in the header of the item for 5:30. But we don't have any of those on this particular agenda.
Okay, well.
So it's the tenure of the board.
I mean, seeing as, like I said, there's no really big development project approvals here or anything that I've really heard from any residents as being, you know, controversial or requiring, having questions, I'm okay with us continuing on. But I just want to make sure, I know we have been starting early to make room for all of the proclamations and employee recognition with the idea that we can start our meeting right at 5:30. But I don't want us to lose sight of that.
I should mention, just for the record too, that I did speak to the City Manager about this and we did discuss it, and we discussed it in past meetings. From a due process and from a notice perspective, the discussion came up early on when we adopted the four o'clock meeting. And it was decided that the notices would start the meetings at four. And as Commissioner Meyer pointed out, a lot of the, what I would say quasi-judicial evidentiary hearings did end up after 5:30. And the City Manager has, in the past, specially set some for 5:00 or 5:30. But the way our notice has been published, as well as placed on the website, it is intended to put notice that the meeting starts at four and will continue forward through the agenda, obviously, at the pleasure of the board.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Meyer, seconded by Commissioner Yula. Any public comment on the agenda? Oh, here comes Helen.
You woke up my brain about something. Helen McBride, Mingo Avenue in Stewart, you brought up the bicycle. I meant to get up here, I went to the art festival at the gazebo. And we had two paramedics on the bicycles riding around. And they were, oh, they were all over the place. And all the comments, I was just sitting there and that, and everybody said how nice it was that if you got sick or a harder, you know, we're older people, we're thinking we're going to have a harder shock or fall. It was great. And I really would like to see that at all of our public events and that it was, it was really a safe feeling, you know? Like you said, the Fire Department, those, and they're nice and very friendly, you know? But they got riding and they would stop if someone asked a question or that. But I just thought. asked, asked a question or that. But I just thought, you know, you gave credit, I want to give credit to the PMT.
Thank you, Helen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You may want to think the police, too, they get jealous.
It's all good.
Moving on to comments from the public. Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comment.
Okay, any on Zoom?
None.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, seconded by Commissioner Clark. Any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none. Mary, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to, I guess we're up to item number 11, land use change for previously annexed properties. Who's taking care of that?
I'll be reading the resolution. This is Resolution Number 31-2022, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, initiating the process to amend the future land use map and assign city future land uses and city zoning categories for properties previously voluntarily annexed into the city limits of Stewart, Florida, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So this is a request of staff, I think also based on previous comments by City Commission, to initiate a process to move forward and amend the future land use map and assign of city future land uses for four properties that were previously annexed into the city. The list is the portion of Nimi Rice property, which was annexed in 2016, and then three Martin County schools, which were all annexed in 2018. I'll go through a little description of each. The Nimi Rice property was brought in in 2016. It's just over 4.6 acres. It has a county future land use of low density at the moment. We're talking to the owner of that and moving forward with recommendations based on that communication. Jensen Beach High School is zoned, sorry, as a future land use of low density and medium density combined on a 65, nearly 66-acre site. Martin County High School, almost 65 acres, has a county future land use of general institutional. And Felix, a Williams Elementary School, 26.6 acres, has a county future land use of low density. So staff are requesting that Commission give direction to move ahead with this process.
Okay, just for the record, too, I should also comment that one of the interveners in the underlying Canor LLC, Mr. Deventura, actually did send a letter to the city also commenting about and requesting that the city move forward on this.
Okay, any, any comments or from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Vice Mayor with a few comments.
Second.
Okay, Mike?
Well, I wanted to thank Mr. Deventura for bringing this up as well. He was, it appeared to be thoroughly researching our, reviewing our comp plan and found that we had some of these parcels that had not had a land use assigned after being annexed in 2018. So that was very good of him. I appreciate the citizen scientist help. There has been, and I don't know how far we want to go into this. I know this is just the motion to direct the staff to begin the process, but I know there's been some discussion specifically for the Nimi Rice property, joining the Canor CPUD property, which is still under appeal or, no, it's still under, we're waiting for a ruling. I don't know, is it worth us discussing any of our thoughts on the matter, Mr. Mortel?
This is a resolution to designate and to give it a future land use. The Development Director will bring back two ordinances, but an ordinance with what he recommends as the future land uses, I'm going to go out on a limb and think that, like, Martin County High School will probably come back as institutional.
I think those are pretty easy.
But I would defer to whatever recommendations they come back, but if you guys had direction you wanted to provide them, you're welcome to.
Okay. Well, I want to hear what staff has to say without maybe, you know, spoiling the pudding. So I guess I'll, I'll let staff. But specifically with this property, I know that given, given its size constraints, some of the proposed land uses I've heard thrown around for it seem to me like maybe, maybe not appropriate. But anyway, I'll wait for the hearing.
Yeah, we are, the owner, actually, of that property did communicate with us. We sent a notification that we were considering doing this and notifying them of this hearing. We did meet with them and their representatives, and there's an ongoing discussion regarding how they feel their property should be moving forward, obviously in view of some of the constraints that we've relayed from our, you know, direction from the City Commission in terms of residential and so forth, and we're relaying those issues.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, seconded by Commissioner Bruner. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no public comment.
Okay, hearing none. Mary, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Okay, moving on to item number 12. And item number 12 is CBA number 10, ARPA funding, budget amendment number 10, North-Daxie Highway Ditch Improvements and Southeast Mango Place Drainage Improvements Project. Mike, would you read the resolution?
This is Resolution Number 32-2022, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, authorizing budget amendment number 10 to the 2021-2022 Enterprise Fund, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of funds for the Northwest Dixie Highway Ditch Improvements Project and Southeast Mango Place Drainage Improvements Project, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Mr. Vice Mayor? I'm over here.
I'm sorry, I was about to echo.
I just want to point, I didn't put this, this would normally have been on consent calendar. I put this on the regular commission action calendar, or not, you guys can obviously ask Mr. Leggett if you have any comments for him, but the only purpose for me putting this on here is to point out that this is, the funding for this is coming from the American Rescue Plan Fund Balance under the category that's specifically allocated for utilities and designated for stormwater. And this is following the Commission's previous direction when we gave the stormwater master plan to get some projects that are designed shovel-ready so that we can go out and apply for grants. So this gets two of those projects that were in the master plan designed ready so that we can start applying for grants for the construction phase.
Okay, great. Do we have any comments or do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, seconded by Commissioner Bruner. Do we have any public comment?
I do have a quick question for Mr. Leggett.
Yes.
The one and only. So I, how many properties or homes in particular are going to be covered by the proposed Dixie Highway Improvement Plan? I know there's several there that tend to get flooded.
Well, this would cover the Stewart Avenue area, because, you know, Panal is starting the project also. This will cover that complete area.
The entire area?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, great. That's it.
Okay, no, no further comment from the public. Mary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number 13, notice to abandon right-of-way for Palmenocove RPUD. Mike?
This is Resolution 35-2022, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, declaring pursuant to Chapter 36 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Stewart, Florida, the intention of the City Commission to abandon and to set public hearings on March 28, 2022 at 5:30 p.m. and April 11, 2022 at 4 p.m. in the City Commission chambers to consider the abandonment of certain public right-of-way within the city, being that portion of a platted 11-foot-wide alley as shown on the plat of dire estates more clearly described in Exhibit A attached, providing for the repeal of Resolution 106-2021 and for other purposes.
Okay, any comments on the commissioners or any, or Tom?
I can give a short presentation, but this, as you can see from the dates, was originally noticed last year for October and November. And tonight, we are noticing it for the next two meetings for first and second reading.
Okay.
Because it has changed.
It has changed.
Okay, that's what, that was going to be my one question.
Yes.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, seconded by Commissioner Clark. Do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Seeing none. Mary, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes. And I'll encourage everybody to read through the appraisers report. That was over 100 pages specifying their methodology for, if I ever thought there was any secret sauce that I didn't understand, it's now very clear.
Did we get the money?
Yeah, unbelievable.
License, Mike, would you read the, the resolution for item number 14, license agreement, downtown valet parking?
This is Resolution 36-2022, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, authorizing the execution of a license agreement between the City of Stewart and Hudson's on the River LLC to utilize parking located at north end of Flagler Avenue for the purposes of operating a downtown valet parking services pilot program.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll take this item. I was approached by Mr. Metekitis from Hudson's, and we were bantering back and forth on parking issues and the best way to try to resolve those issues. The conclusion that we agreed upon was to provide a free valet that anyone could utilize. They don't have to patronize his restaurant or any, any facility. Actually, they could go to the park if they want to. But because of the way valet services work with car stacking, they're able to maximize the parking down into the circle area down on the far north end of Flagler. There are several parking spots in that circle that are not in the allocated valet area. That's specifically for fishermen using the pier down there. And for now, it seems like a good resolve for a pilot program to see if this benefits having that, that use down there.
How many spaces are we talking about?
I believe there's 33.
There won't be any charge for the parking. It's exactly the same as the parking lot, which was the surplus lot from FDOT on the other side at Sailor's Return. So even the folks that want to fish on the fishing pier are welcome to use the valet, and they can't charge them to park, and they're welcome to fish in valet cars, their cars to fish. There's no prohibition.
I'm, I'm okay with it, but the gentlemen or women that fish, is there any way they could just hold two spots for their pickup trucks, fishing poles, something like that, and lighting? One of our constituents wants more lighting down there. If we could get them to put in overhead lighting.
That might be on us. Are we talking about the parking lot area?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, yeah, Milton will look into the lighting issue on it.
Yeah, and but, but...
Are you talking, so there are spaces, but you're talking about wanting them closest to the pier?
Yeah, because I come there in my old pickup truck and all my fishing stuff and my boxes and my taco box and sane and all that. Do they still use those now? Can you? It's been so long since I've fished.
No, they use their iPhone now.
But anyway, because those guys, they go up on the, on the, the old bridge, too, you know?
I couldn't do any worse with my iPhone than I could with a fishing pole.
When my family visits, they, they, they like to go fish.
So Ms. Bruner, you're saying that if they have, like, like you said, the old pickup truck, that they wouldn't want to use the valet? They just want, it would be better for them to park with all their tools and everything instead of have it valet a little bit. It's not that much, it's not a big distance away.
But it might be, maybe they might want to just dump it all out there and have the guy go park their vehicle, but maybe save two spots.
Well, I was going to ask if I could, Mr. Vice Mayor, is it possible? Do we have that loaded up? Can we take a look at the exhibit on there that's got the image? Unfortunately, the bridge is over top of it, so you can't see exactly, but it might be nice for us all to look at what we're talking about. And the, I counted 33 spaces as well. My concerns, and we'll see it if we can, if we can pull it up here.
Is it on the last presentation?
It's on the final, it's on the...
It's on the presentation. It's on the agenda.
On the agenda. You don't have that loaded? Okay, well, essentially, it's, it does seem a little bit, it seems like it could be a little bit confused. When you look at the exhibit and the draft agreement, there's kind of almost arbitrarily the, it's not the entire circle. There's four spaces that are cut off on the easternmost portion and four spaces that are cut off on the east side of the southbound loopback, and then one space cut off on the west side of the southbound loopback, I think, from memory. So what my concern with this is that, you know, if we're not policing this, I'm a little bit worried that, you know, the valet guys might over, may take a couple, take a little bit of liberties. And so we need to stay on top of it. I do have some concerns about the signage. Like, let's be real. I mean, a lot of folks are gonna, gonna see that if, unless the signage is very clear, free, public, valet, and then in small letters, courtesy of Hudson's on the River, might be appropriate. But if it says Hudson's, free valet, no one's going to think that it's available for use for the public, and effectively it'll just be now a private lot for Hudson's unless somebody pushes that. That's what I'm concerned about, because these are our public parking spaces. This is our facility as well, and we are benefited by the success of this business directly, but also, you know, we want our local businesses to succeed.
And Commissioner Meyer, there was a, there was a restriction in the Sunset Bay parking lot that mandated that it remain open to the public. And back when we were redeveloping the marina on the other side, the study was done, and it demonstrated that we actually could do more efficient and park more cars by having the valet, but we were very adamant, like you just pointed out, that it was publicly notified to everybody that it was open to the public. And I think some of that has passed over time, so it may benefit us to do kind of a campaign for both, to remind everybody again that this is not for the restaurant. It is city parking.
That we have the, like, maybe just the review of the signage they put there, again, so that it's crystal clear. So I'm, I'm open to it because if we can, if, if through stacking, we can make more spaces out of the 33 that are included here, then everybody could benefit. I want Hudson's to succeed because that also benefits us directly financially. And, you know, but I don't want us to lose, you know, some valuable parking spaces in those. And to your point, Commissioner Bruner, about the fishermen, you know, they're bringing, they're lugging equipment, and it's going to be tough for them. They're probably going to get edged out in this, so.
I don't want that.
I, I, I guess I would just say, right now, the term is up till 20, March 2023, right?
Yeah, May 23.
And specifically, it's every month, it's month to month at your discretion, and you have a seven-day pullout without cause. So, you know, I guess I'm willing to give it a go. I want them to set up to succeed. Once they open, if they don't have adequate, if the feeling of adequate parking, it's going to be tough for them to fill the seats, which is not good for us and it's not good for them. But we just got to stay on top of it. So, you know, if you feel, Mr. Dias, like, stuff's going on, you know, you at least have my authority, and I'm sure all of ours, to, you know, bring it back to us if it's not working out.
I mean, so when fishermen, thank you, Vice Mayor. So when fishermen come, they don't have a little paper that says, I'm a public fisherman, or I have a little thing. I don't know if they have a, you know, let's say like a city license or something, which we know doesn't exist. So how are we going to discriminate? Is there going to be some kind of a parking guy who says, you know, you should park here with your fishing equipment? It's okay for you to be here for three hours or something, or?
That's not in here at all.
That's not in here.
That's not part of a motion, so if it was...
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how it works, because, for somebody who thinks, well, I'm going to park there for five hours and fish or whatever.
This area is not part of our time-limited parking area, is it?
No.
It is currently?
It's three-year parking, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
Give it a go.
Is someone going to make a motion? I don't know, I don't think I'm going to make the motion, but.
I'll make, just make a couple of comments. First of all, I agree with you about the signage, and I think it's probably time to, to just review this, unrelated to this, we just reviewed the signage over at Sailor's Return, and, and, but we do, the parking is going to be, especially the first, anytime a new restaurant opens up, there's always a, kind of a wave, and so there's going to be a wave of people, and, and I think it's good to try a trial run at it, so.
I'll make a motion, if we can write it up the, the way that we, we want it.
So we have a motion?
There is no motion. I have no motion.
No, Becky.
I'm making a motion.
So we have a motion from Becky, do we have a second?
Well, she said to write it up how we want it, what is that?
Yeah, well, Mike's concern with the, the way it's written, and to see if we could, yes, two parking spots, if they'll hold those for the fishermen, and see how, see how it works, see, see what happens.
Okay.
And, and, and like he said, we can always come back, since your eyes are going to be on it.
So two spaces closest to the pier?
Yeah, I think so.
That are going to be excluded from this.
Right.
Can we turn the view around just to, so we can look at, there's, so there's a block of three or four, if you turn around.
Towards the pier.
Towards the pier. There's a block of three or four immediately across, yeah, right there, and then, and then on the other side, that, the loop around that goes back southbound, there's another, I mean, that's where the next lot begins, so there's three there, and then are there two right there on the side? Or is that loading, if you turn to the right? Keep turning?
I think those will be spaces.
Those will be spaces.
Yeah, and, and, and if it is very successful, then that, I think he will even do more what we would ask, you know, he's got a lot there.
So there has been some discussion that he has asked about, at his cost, putting in additional parking in that, the clothes there, just putting in some additional pervious parking, so if you make that a part of your motion, and he says that he'll do that, we can also approach him about, about additional parking.
I think we should.
If, if, my Commissioners want to, we'll add it.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with him bringing forward and going through the normal process, putting some pervious parking, extra parking there, again, at his expense, that will benefit everybody. I don't know if it's appropriate for it to be tied up in this motion, though, I would rest, I would much rather us just focus on the valet parking agreement, let's, let's give signal to the city manager that we like the idea of him working with Mr. Metekitis on putting some additional parking there, pervious parking there. My only concern, Commissioner, about the, the fishermen spots is that, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to enforce that, you know, I mean, anybody's going to go up and say, oh, I'm a fisherman, you know, and.
Well, just have them there available.
It just might get so complicated.
I don't know that we can dedicate it to fishermen either, I think it just has to be open to the public.
Right.
I'll just say that there's more, I think there's probably more fishermen on the actual bridge itself, and depending on what time of day, if they're not fishing in the morning, all of those spaces on Dixie Highway.
Yeah, right.
Are taken, and they have to walk quite a bit of a distance.
Oh, that's true.
And so, it's just as often, if I go to Sailor's Return now, I'm often parking, if I'm, either I'm using the valet, or I'm parking.
Shepherd's Park.
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, later they opened the restaurant.
He said it would go till 10, that he has the option to go past 10, right?
The valet, the restaurants take them later.
Or at least his guys need to be very considerate of the fishermen, that that's our main concern, our real.
And obviously, this is, this is not something that's etched in stone, you guys as a Commission can move quickly, and if you get negative feedback, any one of you can bring it back up to us, and the city can modify this accordingly and address it, the city manager put a clause in it that gives them a 30-day out for any reason whatsoever, so if it turns out that you need to make modifications, just bring, give us the feedback you get, and the city manager can adjust accordingly.
So can I ask the Commissioner just to revise the motion, just to accept, and then?
Yes, let's just go forward with what we have, leave out the two spaces for the fishermen, and see how this works out, and we can come back whenever we want.
Do you need guidance, probably not in this agreement, but that we have the authority to review the signage, the valet signage, so that it is clear?
Yeah, I mean, they, the, the valet already asked me about signs and stuff, so I.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Clark?
Can I request clarification that the two parking spaces are included in the motion?
No, no, we, she took that out. Just a straight approval. Okay, so do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mary, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, item 15, Amendment to the Land Development Code to Incorporate Tree Removal Penalties. Mike, would you read the resolution?
This is ordinance number 2478-2022, an ordinance of the City of Stewart, Florida, amending the existing section of Chapter 5 Resource Protection Standards of the City's Land Development Code, establishing penalties for violations for the removal of trees in violation of the code, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for codification, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay, Tom, has anything changed since the last reading?
It has, Vice Mayor, and I'll just go over that very quickly. You can see from the strike through and underline, we've eliminated, it is still the three times the amount for every offense, we struck through an and/or option and, and included now, if full restoration on-site is determined by both the property owner and the city to be infeasible, then the remaining value of the penalty donated into the city's tree replacement fund. And of course, we still have preference to restoration of the property before any monies go into the fund. So the only change is, we've removed the and/or statement, and then put in the agreement between the city and the, and the violator to agree on the, on the penalty into the tree fund, if it's not feasible to plant on-site.
Any comments or anything from the Commissioners?
I'm, thank you for the, the clarification, because the and/or did seem like folks could, could wiggle out of it, but reading it again, while we're up here, the, the thing that maybe could be misconstrued again is that we're already calculating three times the amount for every offense, but then again, they're going to pay into the replacement fund at three to one ratio, the replacement fund is already accounting for the total number of inches, so it's three times inches, and then three times the payment per inch on top of that, or no?
No, it's, it's the one, three to one for the penalty, and then the money either goes towards on-site restoration, or if it's not feasible, then it goes into the fund, but it's only a one-time, three-to-one ratio.
One-time, three-to-one, so it's just in the summary that it could be, okay, I got you. I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Only thing I was going to say, as I came, I sent it to Mr. Mortel, an article about a community up outside of Washington, DC, that had a tree ordinance, and in the particular case they discussed, the tree that was cut down had a $49,000 fine for cutting it down. The folks cut it down intentionally because property values had gotten so high in order to build a piece of property that became a cost of doing business, and I just found that shocking, but that was, that was what they did, so I just, I found that troubling, that, how, that's just a $49,000 fine is a cost of doing business, but apparently it can be, so anyways, we have a motion, and we have a second, by, motion by Commissioner Meyer, and second by Commissioner Clark. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mary, would you call the roll?
Sure, Vice Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Okay, great, seeing nothing else, I believe that was the last item, so meeting adjourned.
Watch, you're going to have people come at 5:30.